Welcome. The regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, July ninth, two thousand and eighteen, will be called to order at seven P. M. At this time, would everyone willing and able please stand for the invocation? Sheila Finlayson is gonna let us know what you'd like to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, I attended the funeral of Wendy Winters, one of those fallen at the Capitol Building. I had the privilege of hearing Reverend John Crestwell, the associate pastor of Universal, Unitarian, Universal Church. And I was quite moved by his comments, as well as his eulogy to Wendy. And so this evening, I asked him to come to offer our invocation, Mr. Crestwell, Reverend Crestwell.
Let us pause and reflect, and pray. Today is day twelve. Twelve days after we have been changed. Twelve is a holy number. And I ask Creative Spirit of Life, God of many names, to allow the Holy Spirit to be present in this meeting. Remind us that we cannot see another's woe and not be in sorrow too. That we cannot see another's grief and not seek for kind relief. That we cannot see another's tear and not feel our sorrow share. Thank you for those words, William Blake. Spirit of Life, we come seeking truth, seeking to be present, seeking to do justice, love, mercy, and walk humbly with the God or the love of our understanding. We come from many places, but give us attunement, give us at-one-ment in this moment, knowing that we are of the same substance, that we are humanity. Allow us to be civil, allow us to be understood, and let the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in thy and our sight, in the name of all that is holy, good, just, virtuous, and righteous. Amen.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Yeah.
Alderman Tierney.
Here.
Alderman Peon.
Here.
Alderman Pindell Charles.
Here.
Alderman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Here.
Alderman Henson.
Here.
Alderman Savitz.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to remove O dash two-nine dash one-eight lease of Truxton Park to Kayak Annapolis LLC on first reader.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
As have it.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda are city council citations to the city council, well, actually, okay, our city council citations to the Annapolis Business celebrating milestone anniversaries.
What happened to the appointment? Do we have, did we skip one because we're gonna get them printed?
Yes.
Right, so the Annapolis Business is celebrating milestone anniversaries? Jennifer Kay.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So could Jennifer Kay, Tim, and Ellen Kay come forward from the woodward and schooner, please? And, and we're gonna get Annabeth to come forward too, from Annabeth of Annapolis, and Sofia Garcia from Blanco Floor Silva, thank you.
Thank God.
It's great.
It's great.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, would you tell us what businesses they are?
Yes, I'm Annabeth.
Yes, I knew.
Blue Wing and Blanco Floor.
Okay, thank you.
Fred, we still don't have a citation for Mr. Brown.
Okay.
Okay.
What is the next citation of reports like we were saying?
I guess you just do.
So we're just waiting for one more citation to get printed. Just bear with us for a few minutes, thank you.
She has, oh, Sheila has, so you can go.
Okay, great. Okay, well, another one of my favorite people, if you could come forward, Ronaldo Brown.
And family.
And Alderman Finlayson. And can your family come up too, is that okay?
And, and just so everybody can know what we're doing here, this is the ceremonial item to, for a citation to Ronaldo Brown.
He's retired. Hey, hey, Fred, that's trouble right there. That's trouble right there, Mr. Brown, he's trouble.
Well, we have a city council citation for Mr. Ronaldo Brown. Initially, it was to celebrate his thirty years of service to the city. He has been in our Public Works Department, is it thirty years?
No, thirty and a half.
Thirty and a half years, and has always been someone that you could rely on and count on. But equally as important is what he does for the community. Ronaldo is in my ward, and when I became Alderman, I was invited to his backpack giveaway. That was twelve years ago. And it was just for the young people in Oxford Landing.
Basically, it's all over.
And now it's for, see, he's telling the story for it. And now, over five hundred kids come to his eleven hundred. Okay, so I'm out of touch with the numbers. Over eleven hundred kids benefit from his backpack giveaway. There isn't a kid who walks away without school supplies, a full stomach, having played in the moon bounce and enjoyed snowballs, and just had an awesome day to set them off on a good school year. He has the support of the community. You know, everything he does, he does with volunteer work. You know, all of the food, all of the supplies, people donate to him because they know how much he gives back to the community. That's in August. And then in December, he turns around, and he does it again for his Christmas giveaway.
In Ward Three.
In Ward Three. So there isn't a child that goes without toys for Christmas. So we could not let you get away without showing our true appreciation, not that we expect you to stop the giveaways, let's be clear, because we need those, but to say thank you as a valued city employee and a true trustee in our community. Our community, and particularly my ward, is a better place because of your commitment to it. So, we do have a city council citation, and it reads, "To Ronaldo Brown, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we're pleased to confer upon you the city council citation in recognition of your commitment and your work to the life of the city of Annapolis for thirty years in the Public Works Maintenance Department. We commend Ronaldo for his decades of community commitment coordinating backpack giveaways, starting with kids in his own neighborhood, and now benefiting more than eleven hundred students. We greatly appreciate your leadership in the annual Christmas giveaway for children from Oxford Landing and throughout our city. You have been and will continue to be a tremendous asset to our city and its citizens." And it's signed under the hands of this great seal of the city of Annapolis, Mayor Gavin Buckley, and all eight members of the Annapolis City Council.
Can I say something?
Right here, the mic's on for you. Actually, what I want to say, all the hard work I do and everything is, is not just me, it's my wife that's beside me to make sure everything gets done, and it's the rest of my team back here, Meet the Browns, I mean, they, I mean, they're the team that I love, I mean, this is family right here. I mean, when I come to them and tell them I'm putting on any event, it don't take them no hesitation, the first thing they say is, "Let's go, I'm ready." A few months ago, we were supposed to have been going to Hartford County to feed some homeless people, the guy called me and said that he didn't get all the paperwork done and we didn't go. If you could have seen the frustration of some of their faces, and I was saying to myself, "I gotta do something," because they were ready to go. I mean, we was geared, we had a bus, we was ready to go to, go there and feed the homeless. But we landed up going to the Lighthouse Shelter, and we fed the people at the Lighthouse Shelter, and we going back there again, but just to see me going to my family, which I love, and which is my backbone behind me, when I say I'm ready to do something, they ready. You know, I just want to tell all y'all, thank you. I can't do what I do without y'all's support.
And we love every bit of you.
Also, what I want to touch on as well, I know y'all, I know this wasn't part of y'all's plans and what y'all had going on, I just want to mention that public works need to be a part of the first responders. Those guys work hard, when you got incidents going on, Public Works is there, if a tree go down, the police come, they call Public Works. If a light go out, they call Public Works. Just the other day, they had that big thing out there on Best Gate with the Capitol, they called Transportation for, get buses to haul those people from eight-eight-eight over to the mall. I don't know why we all can't get together and say, "Public Works, you guys are first responders as well." Because they do the work just as well as the police, just as well as the paramedics. Pothole hit, police come, call Public Works. Public Works is the backbone, they need to be put out there as first responders as well to help them. Thank you. Everybody can just introduce their name from one side.
Well, tell us who they are in relations to you.
Okay, it's my brother Alonso. What, all right, what we'll do is let Alonso say his partner, and she can say hers, and we'll work it around, and everybody can introduce themselves and say who they are.
I'm Alonso, I'm Ronaldo's brother, older brother.
Wait. I'm your what?
My uncle.
I'm Alonso, I'm his nephew.
Thomas Saint, his older sister. Terry, his wife.
Samuel, his niece. And I'm.
I'm Chris, I'm Chris' friend from the Reagan.
I'm Maya, his granddaughter too.
And I'm Tabby, I'm his mom.
Shapita, I'm his niece.
I'm Chaka Brown, I'm Ronaldo's father.
I'm Shalonda, I'm the younger sister, and I was one of those ones that was upset because I was geared up and ready to serve.
Come in front of the table.
We got to get closer together, not in the left.
We want to cross.
And if they're verbally challenged, you know, it's a separate crime, it's a report. We need, we need mom and dad more, mom. There you go. All right. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Ronaldo, thank you. This is really interesting, stick around. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Yes, Public Safety Committee was scheduled to meet on July the second, however, the meeting was canceled because we did not have a quorum. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September the seventeenth, at six P. M. in each chamber. Thank you.
Alderman Peon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Audit Committee will have its initial meeting on July eighteenth, right here in the council chambers. It will be at six P. M., and I'm very much looking forward to getting started and definitely doing a little rock and roll with, with our duties. The public is invited and welcome. Thank you.
Alderman Attorney?
I don't know if I can say rock and roll, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will be meeting this Thursday, which is the twelfth of July at six P. M., and I believe we will be looking at the adequate facilities legislation.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee will meet tomorrow, July tenth, at four P. M. here in council chambers, and our agenda's posted online. Thank you.
Alderman Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing and Human Welfare Committee will meet on Tuesday, July seventeenth, at six P. M. here in council chambers. We're looking forward to a presentation from the county's health officer so that we can better understand how we explore that human welfare end of the committee. Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
Finance Committee's next meeting will be at ten-thirty on July eighteenth, right before the rock and roll starts with the Audit Committee.
Nothing more rock and roll than Audit Committees. Okay, good. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
Joining comments by the general public, the public may speak on any item not scheduled for public hearing tonight. Legislation scheduled for public hearing is O dash two-six dash eighteen Legislative Procedure Updates, O dash two-eight dash eighteen Arts and Entertainment District Tax Credit. We have one speaker, and that is Conrad Bucheister. Oh, sir, Chuck, you can go first, Chuck.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm here to speak generally, Chuck Walsh, well, about the Avenue.
Annapolis, Maryland. I was not in town at the last meeting of the council, and Mr. Brown, who just preceded me, spoke incredibly highly of your Public Works Department. I'm the chairman of a, of a public art organization called Art Walk, and over the last ten years, we've done public art largely on walls, private property, involving local artists, Marion Warren, and a, and a broad range of artists, from Providence Center, from the Lighthouse Shelter, from the English as a Second Language kids from the high school. It's been a fantastic program. Over the last year, we attempted and succeeded in painting your crosswalks and your sidewalks at Park Place, West Street, and Amos Garrett Boulevard. And to do that, it took the immense cooperation and participation of your Public Works Department. We had the support privately of Merrill Lynch and Homestead Gardens, the Anaronda County Public School System that we worked with, with their PVA program, with the Anaronda Arts Council, but I can't tell you how critical your Public Works Department was in us getting this project done. Imagine West Street, across from Park Place, to do that painting without significantly interrupting your traffic flow and your pedestrian flow. David Gerald, Lisa Greco, and Mr. Berniston, Jesse Berniston from Public Works, came, Jesse came every morning to, one, provide the safety that we needed, to provide the help that we needed, and I cannot say enough for what they did, and while it doesn't represent what Ronaldo Brown spoke to in terms of what he, what Public Works has done for your city with respect to, to the kinds of things he mentioned, I just have to tell you, they were fantastic, and we hope you like what we've done on West Street, and we hope we have a chance to do it again. But they deserve a major pat on the back. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Okay, Conrad.
Hello, my name is Conrad Bucheister. I live at Five Wagner Street, Annapolis, Maryland. I lived there most of my life. I went to Bates Middle School, Annapolis High School, Washington College on the eastern shore of Maryland, and I just recently graduated from St. John's Graduate Institute. I plan on planting my flag here in this city, and I'm happy, but at the same time, a little concerned that this is my first city council meeting, I wouldn't be here if I didn't feel the need to be here and come speak with you all. Ms. Finlayson, it was nice to see you at Annapolis High School after hours at Panther Cafe, we appreciate the food donations. Mr. Rodriguez, I work with your mother over at Annapolis High School, please tell her I said hello. And Mayor Buckley, I've been a staunch supporter of you ever since I started working at Lemongrass, the Metropolitan, running my dog out, helping you campaign, and I'm still a staunch supporter of you. I just wanted to say that my girlfriend and I, we really had a great time at that CBGB party out by Edgewood, and we would love to see more of those events, which are not necessarily in the heart of downtown. I mean, I've spent, how many years of my life here, twenty-five years of my life here out of twenty-eight. I've worked downtown at the Market House, I'm excited to see the new Market House opening. I've worked at Big Cheese, City Dock, you name it, you know? But I am more excited to see some developments outside of the heart of Annapolis. I know that it might be unrealistic, it might be difficult to sort of accomplish this, but I've spent some time recently in Richmond, Virginia, they have a lot of breweries out there, and, you know, some communities might not want to see that particular type of development because obviously with alcohol comes problems, concerns, but that is some of the culture that, those are some of the places that could enhance the culture of Annapolis, the arts scene. I know that a lot of young folks out there are looking for jobs, creative type jobs, and many of them would probably pour all of their focus and effort in creating amazing cri- And while it doesn't represent what Ronaldo Brown spoke to in terms of what Public Works has done for your city with respect to the kinds of things he mentioned, I just have to tell you, they were fantastic, and we hope you like what we've done on West Street, and we hope we have a chance to do it again. But they deserve a major pat on the back. Thank you.
Okay, Conrad.
Hello, my name is Conrad Bukheister. I live at 5 Wagner Street, Annapolis, Maryland. I lived there most of my life. I went to Bates Middle School, Annapolis High School, Washington College on the eastern shore of Maryland, and I just recently graduated from St. John's Graduate Institute. I plan on planting my flag here in this city. And I'm happy, but at the same time, a little concerned that this is my first city council meeting. I wouldn't be here if I didn't feel the need to be here and come speak with you all. Ms. Finlayson, it was nice to see you at Annapolis High School after hours at Panther Cafe. We appreciate the food donations. Mr. Roger Rugez, I work with your mother over at Annapolis High School. Please tell her I said hello. And Mayor Buckley, I've been a staunch supporter of you ever since I started working at Lemongrass, the Metropolitan, running my dog out, helping you campaign, and I'm still a staunch supporter of you. I just wanted to say that my girlfriend and I, we really had a great time at that CBGB party out by Edgewood, and we would love to see more of those events, which are not necessarily in the heart of downtown. I mean, I've spent, how many years of my life here? 25 years of my life here out of 28. I've worked downtown at the Market House. I'm excited to see the new Market House opening. I've worked at Big Cheese, City Dock, you name it, you know? But I am more excited to see some developments outside of the heart of Annapolis. I know that it might be unrealistic, it might be difficult to sort of accomplish this, but I've spent some time recently in Richmond, Virginia. They have a lot of breweries out there, and, you know, some communities might not want to see that particular type of development because obviously with alcohol comes problems, concerns. But that is some of the culture that, those are some of the places that could enhance the culture of Annapolis, the arts scene. I know that a lot of young folks out there are looking for jobs, creative-type jobs, and many of them would probably pour all of their focus and effort into creating amazing craft beers, and we could really put that on the map for our city. But I've heard talks of development downtown that are very concerning as a resident, current, and a resident in the future, and somebody who's going to be seriously planting his flag here. We all want what's good for the city. And I don't think that most young people are aware of some of these plans that I've been hearing about concerning development downtown. The one thing that's most concerning is this underwater parking garage. I don't know who's going to benefit from that. I know clearly it's a very direct solution to the parking problem, but sometimes the most direct solution is not the best solution. So, I know it's a conversation for the future and not necessarily tonight, but I hope to bring more folks out here at the appropriate time to discuss these future ideas about development. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, thanks Conrad. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no motion in the chamber, I declare comments by the general public closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
So, thank you. I've just got some scripted words here to say. So, the past 10 days have been tremendously difficult for the families of the victims of the attack at the Capitol, and the survivors, and our first responders, and our entire city. I would like to take a moment to thank Reverend Cresswell from the Unitarian Universalist Church of Annapolis for this evening's prayers and his beautiful words on Saturday at the memorial for Wendy Winters. Tragedies like this, like the one that occurred on June 28th, have a way of bringing communities together during times of crisis and grief. The response from our community and from our communities across Maryland, and actually from the world, have been beautiful. I'm incredibly proud to be the mayor of our city and to see the outpouring of love and support for these families and survivors. I was also incredibly proud of the reporters and staff who rallied to march in our vigil down Main Street the day after the shooting, as well as to join us during the July 4th parade. Their courage is endless, and we know how hard it was for these reporters to be the story and on the other end of the camera. It is definitely not their normal routine to actually be the news story. As time goes by, the details of this horrible shooting will be revealed. There is no doubt in anyone's mind that our incredible response by our city's fire and police departments and Public Works, and our partners in Anaronda County, prevented even more unspeakable fatalities on that day. We will be forever grateful to their courage and ability to so quickly respond, make a plan, and apprehend this horrible person. This event demonstrates why our first responder plans and carry out important trainings and drills. I would like to commend Police Chief Baker, Fire Chief Stokes, Emergency Manager, Management Chief Simmons, and their outstanding professional teams for a response, along with Anaronda County, that many experts are heralding across the country. Our city will continue to heal. During times like these, our city will lean on our creative outlets as a way to express our sorrow and our unity through our talented musicians and through people like Temple Cohen, the city's poet laureate who shared his writings about the tragedy during our vigil at City Dock. We will continue to keep this story alive so that we never forget Rob, Wendy, Gerald, John, and Rebecca. We will continue to fight for protection of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution that guarantees the freedom of the press. We will have a benefit memorial concert on Saturday, July 28th, featuring local musicians and journalists. I will be reaching out to mayors of other cities who've also had to deal with gun violence and mass shootings. We will work on a bipartisan approach at local levels of government to enact legislation that helps to prevent future tragedies. When these shootings happen, the bad guys don't choose Republicans or Democrat victims. They just shoot. We hope our efforts will inspire our state and federal leaders to take action and finally get our nation on a better path of reducing gun violence and addressing mental health issues. Thank you to the citizens of Annapolis for everything you have been doing and will do in the future to hold these victims in your hearts and bond together to strengthen our city. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Appointment AP-10-18 and the confirmation of Joanna D. Dickinson, CPA, CFE, and Director of Finance.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Joanna D. Dickinson as Director of Finance.
Move, approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, you've got a lot of friends who are ready. Sure it's gonna be like that the whole time. No, I'm gonna come to you, we're gonna do an oath right here.
As a city manager, I just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, I'm looking forward to it.
So, will you repeat after me? Aye.
Aye.
So, your name?
Joanna D. Dickinson.
Do swear?
Do swear.
Or affirm, as the case may be?
Or affirm, as the case may be.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
That I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully, without partiality?
Diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice?
Execute the office of Finance Director?
Execute the office of Finance Director.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the Charter and Code of the City of Annapolis.
And the Charter and Code of the City of Annapolis.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, Gavin? I just want to say thank you to Melissa for carrying the torch for a real critical time, and I'm sure Teresa feels that way too.
Yes. Melissa has been a godsend.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Consent Calendar. Items on the Consent Calendar include Journals of Proceedings, CCM 061818, regular meeting minutes, CCM 062518, special meeting minutes, First Readers, R-19-18, Nonprofit Vendors During Fall Boat Shows 2018, R-31-18, City Debt and Financial Administration Policies, referred to the Financial Advisory Commission, R-32-18, Anaronda Medical Center Cardiac Surgery Program. And that is the end of the Consent Calendar items.
Are there any objections to the items on the Consent Calendar?
So move.
Okay, hearing no objection. Second for that discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Peon?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Roger?
Aye.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Public Hearings, beginning with Ordinance O-26-18 Legislative Procedure Updates, for the purpose of clarifying the rules of procedure for the passage of ordinances, charter amendments, and resolutions.
Okay, there is no one signed up to speak. This is a bit of housekeeping here. No one coming forward, I declare the public hearing on O-26-18 closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-28-18 Arts and Entertainment District Tax Credit, for the purpose of providing certain tax credit incentives to eligible persons and specifying the annual distribution of a real property tax credit incentive.
Okay, we have one speaker, Eric Evans, please come forward. Name and address, please.
Good evening. I represent the Annapolis Arts District. 10 years ago, in 2008, the Annapolis Arts District was designated at the request of the city. It was approved by the county and the state. 10 years ago when this happened, the county and the city passed resolutions that offered a tax incentive to property owners that revitalized their property to the point where it increases the tax value and is to make it in arts use. When the city passed this resolution, it did not add that to the city code. So, this is to just fix the code error from 10 years ago. The Arts District designation was for a 10-year period, and we just got re-designated July 1st. So, we just had some housekeeping issues to do. And this will fix that error. The Arts District has gone from a sleepy little area that was on the edge of downtown, you know, 10 years ago, and today is really starting to make a mark for itself. Towson University just did a study on all the Arts Districts in the state. In the last two years, the increased tax revenue that the Arts District here in Annapolis has paid out to state, local, and city government has increased by $4.49 million. To date, the city of Annapolis has not had to use this tax credit. We do have a property owner that was interested in it this year, and that's when we realized that we had a missing piece of the pie, so to speak, in our tax code. This is just to help us to fix that error. And it'll allow us to keep doing the good work we're doing to increase the value of our community. But it's no, by no means a tax giveaway. It doesn't reduce tax revenue at any level that people are currently paying. It just helps people if the value goes up for a few years after doing the remodel. Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Eric, our fiscal impact tells us what the phase in and actually phase out of this is, but I don't have a sense, and maybe you don't either, of the actual dollar value, the amount of taxes that are waived, and actually even the number of businesses that have applied to have tax relief.
So, in the last 10 years, we have not given a tax break for this particular reason in the city of Annapolis. We do have one property owner who's interested in being able to use it, and that's how we realized that there was a mistake in our city code. So, so far, it's had zero economic impact. However, if this property owner is able to revitalize his property, and it increases the tax value if it gets reassessed to a higher value due to doing the renovations to his property, then he will get a break on the new taxes paid. So, it gets phased out over the course of 10 years. But in the meantime, if he revitalizes his property, it could cause his adjoining neighbors' property values to go up as well, where the city would see a net gain. So, really, it becomes a net gain for the city to offer a tax incentive in this particular case.
Thank you.
Alderman Peon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Evans, do you think this year where most property owners are gonna have their tax, property tax bills go up in excess of 20%, do you really think this is a good time for this legislation to be approved by us?
Absolutely. I live in the city and hate the fact that I'm having to pay, but also understand that I have to pay the additional tax. But again, this will help increase development in the city. It is not giving away any money. We will not have any less money going into the pot due to this legislation. It will only give us the opportunity to increase our tax revenue. I'd be happy to share with you the article that was recently in the Capital Newspaper, and it'll show you the study that shows that we've actually increased, again, our tax money that you guys have collected from people in the Arts District when you look at property and income and sales tax and arts and entertainment taxes by over $4 million.
So, it's your position that the other taxes will make up for the little bit less property?
This is not a tax cut. So, if I currently pay $100 in taxes, property taxes, and I renovate my building, and now I get reassessed and I owe $150, I will still pay $100 for three years, and then after that, I'll start paying $105, $110, and it'll go up till I pay the full $150 10 years from now. So, it just takes, if I have an underperforming property and I renovate it, and I turn it into an arts use, and the property gets assessed at a higher value because of that renovation, does this kick in?
Well, I guess I understand long-term that it is a plus perhaps in terms of collecting taxes, but I fail to see how short-term this doesn't involve collecting less property tax. I mean, that's the purpose of it.
Well, there's no tax cut. That property owner may decide not to do the renovation if he does not have the incentive to do so, and it may stay in its current status quo. But this gives him an incentive to bring his building up to a higher standard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Evans, I'm looking at the article, and it speaks to the economic benefit around the state. Do we have the numbers that speak to our Arts and Entertainment District? How many artists are living there? How many residences are housing artists? I think part of the problem, and it's not a real problem, we know it exists, we don't see it. You know, we know it's thriving, but we don't know how many people are actually taking advantage of the district. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Is there a way to give us some data so that we can feel more connected?
I'd be happy to send you the Towson University study that they did. They did it completely independent of us and the state, so there was no undue influence, so that they would have accurate numbers, and they do that every couple of years.
So, do they break it out by district? So do they break it out by district?
They show the economic impact for each district. And some are increasing, and some are decreasing. We are doing very well at the moment.
Okay, that would be terrific, you know. We're there with you, but we probably just need some more.
I'd be happy to send you the Towson study.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Attorney?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hesitated in introducing this legislation at this time for that very reason, my colleague Alderman Peon, because of the residents, you know, embracing or trying to embrace another tax hike. However, the clear delineation about this is that, number one, there are very, very strict eligibility factors that minimize the use. And as Eric said, and I'll repeat, it is only for the increase. The credit only applies to the increase in the tax assessment. So it actually will probably, you know, not take effect for a couple of years or so because that renovation has to happen. You know, the business has to elect, A, he or she knows that there is this benefit, B, they elect to do an enhancement to their property, and then they get assessed, and that's where the credit comes in. So the linear path of this isn't quick. So, and again, this is codifying something that the state has enabled for us to do. So therefore, I felt it was a timely thing to support in the interest of the economic vitality of the Arts District.
Thank you.
Madam City Manager, did you have some?
I did. In response to Ms. Finlayson's question, online, we provided the Towson study. And it was prepared by the Regional Economic Studies Institute at Towson University. And in the staff report, Hollis Minor took some of the statistics out of that. Compared to 2014, in fiscal year 16, employment in the Annapolis Arts District grew by 654 jobs. Added 62.9 million in state gross domestic product and increased wages by 18.6 million. Total state and local revenue spurred by business in our Arts District grew by 4.49 million in FY16 compared to FY14. This includes direct, indirect, and induced impacts for property, income, sales, payroll, and other state and local taxes in Maryland for both new businesses and visitor spending at events and festivals.
So we do have that? Or can you send that?
Yes, it's online.
It's online?
It's online under Legistar. I'd be happy to email it to you as well.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Alderman Arnett? Sorry, Eric.
Well, no, this is actually for you and the city manager. We don't get to share in all of that growth, save the property tax increase. And I think one of our things that we really need to push for the next legislative session is that we get to share in more of the revenue that we generate in the city in terms of sales tax and a whole bunch of other kinds of taxes that just fly right across our borders and into the state treasury. And I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's ever been fair. And I certainly don't think it's fair to our taxpayers in the city that we don't get to share in the good. And Eric and, I think, the Arts District has done a fantastic job. And I certainly want, I wish them continued good success. But I'd like to share a little bit in some of their success as well.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Madam President, Council. My name is Chuck Walsh, 12 Southgate Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland. I may be the property owner that Mr. Evans is referring to. We are a resident of 48 years in Annapolis. We are well aware of the issues of the budget in the city. And Annapolis has been a pioneer in many things that have spilled over to other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland and beyond. But the Arts Districts and the arts is not one of those. And what I mean by that is we've waited 10 years to get the implementation of this that, as Mr. Evans pointed out, should have been done in 2008. So if we flip the coin, the city has had the benefit of not allowing property owners that want to cater to the arts, artists, and art-related businesses for 10 years. Hagerstown has this, Baltimore City has this, Allegheny has this. A whole range of communities in the state have this. And it is, as Mr. Evans pointed out, it's an abatement of tax increases over a period of 10 years. It is not a reduction of your tax revenues. And again, no one is being insensitive to the situation that the city has with respect to its budget. Alderman Finlayson asked, how does it measure in the city of Annapolis? These studies are great statewide, but you want to know how it works in the city. To the best of my knowledge, and I've been in the Arts District as a property owner for 13 years, I don't know of another property owner that has yet sought to substantially redo or upgrade their properties in any significant way. And part of it, as Mr. Evans pointed out, is because there's not been an incentive. And I realize that. And some of you know that I'm involved in the arts and art walk and public art. And it's time. We have two properties, small little property, one's small, one's not so small, in the Arts District. We have six artists in one, Alderman Finlayson. And we have four artists in another. And we're getting ready, we're in the process of renovating another building, started in 2018, which I'll make a point of at the end of this. But there are lots of artists, and there are property owners that I believe need to be incentivized to upgrade their properties, to maximize the impact of the Arts District and of artists and arts businesses that want to move in. Because little can be doubted that go across the country, big cities, Wynwood and Miami Beach and Cumberland, arts do provide economic development. Alderman Arnett, I do think, and I've got nothing in front of me to prove it, but I think Mr. Evans can show you, that artists do ultimately improve properties because it brings retail, it brings restaurants, it brings housing. And those things bring higher tax assessments and higher tax revenues. So I would ask you, as a property owner in the Arts District that wants to do well by artists, I want to do well by me, to, after 10 years, to allow this to go into effect. And I would ask you to consider, what does the effective date mean? When it speaks of the effective date taking effect on this legislation at the time the law is passed, when I brought this issue to Mr. Evans, we began our renovations. We began our upgrading of our buildings in 2018. And I would ask that the council, to the extent you can by legislative history or in the wording of the law itself, make it clear that those of us who've begun in 2018, having waited since 2008, get the benefit of this tax abatement because we ultimately will pay taxes at the highest level. And we will result in having our neighbors pay higher taxes than they would otherwise because we will improve the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the legislation is effective on passage. So it'll go, I guess it goes to the Finance Committee. We'll have a hearing next week. Could conceivably come back to the council on the 23rd of July. So anything that's applied for after that. But that does raise an interesting question. The legislation doesn't speak to it. And it may well be that there's some other documentation we need. What is the application process? What is the approval process? Are those structures in place now? Since you seem to be pursuing it, you might know something about that. Is there a form you fill out?
Alderman Arnett, that is a wonderful question. That's when I first realized Annapolis had no mechanism for doing this. There is a form that you fill out. When I went to Mr. Evans, he said, "We don't have an approved form by the city." So your question is spot on. I'm not sure exactly what it takes beyond this legislation to have something that a property owner can utilize to jump into the process.
So that may slow us down. But I'm not trying to think about who you would even apply to. Do you apply to planning and zoning as a permit? Do you apply to the Finance Department? I mean...
Yes.
So there's some work. We can pass the legislation, but it seems like it needs a little more guts before you can actually apply. We'll have to figure out what we're going to do about that.
And I would urge the council to expedite the enactment. And hopefully, those of us interested in it can work with planning and zoning and Mr. Evans to fill out the details. And again, we are not reinventing the wheel. Baltimore has the form, other communities have the form. It's just, we don't.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes. Mr. Walsh, you provided some of the quantitative data that I was trying to garner. Because it sounds like you have 10 artists living in two of your...
Working, working.
Working.
It's not live-work-as-yet.
Okay. How many others have artists living in their residences without taking the benefit or attempting to take the benefit of a tax credit because they couldn't? But how many of them did it anyway, like you did? And that's the question I was trying to get to. We know it exists.
Alderman Finlayson, I think I, having my office in the Arts District, I think I have my finger on the pulse. Maybe Mr. Evans would know. My sense is, honestly, is that not a lot of property owners have upgraded their property. I'm not suggesting what the reason for that is, but they've not upgraded it. They've moved artists in, there are some. But they've not upgraded their property. We think the Arts District is ready to really blossom. And to do that, you have to upgrade your properties. So I can't, I don't think property owners have upgraded their properties as they might if the council passed this legislation. But I can only speak to myself.
Well, you're a perfect example, to be honest. I guess it was about, I guess it was about 10 years ago that Alderman Arnett and I visited Frederick, the city of Frederick, as the up-and-coming A&E district before we took on this program. And I was there about two months ago. And it is thriving. It is what we want to be. Their waterfront, which was a desolate area, is now brimming with activity and restaurants and people and just stuff to do. And it's truly a model. And for those who have not been in a, or seen a successful A&E district, we should take another field trip. Because they are, what they've done is phenomenal in the span of 10 years, I guess, was when we were there before. So, and so I suspect that they have embraced the tax credit piece of it.
There are skeptics, I understand that. But there are arts districts across the United States of all sizes, smaller than Annapolis and certainly much larger, that have just blossomed and made those areas... You speak of Frederick, what a perfect example. And Cumberland. And Hyattsville. I mean, it's just, who can explain it except it happens? And that's, that was the purpose of, again, take one moment. The state, when they passed the law, they gave a benefit to artists that moved into the Arts District. They don't have to pay state income tax. They gave, as you all know, they gave a benefit to entertain, to arts and theatrical facilities. They don't have to pay the entertainment tax. This city approved that. It's just the property owners, forgive me, that you forgot. And what Mr. Evans and what I and what the Arts District is asking is you do the third leg of the stool and you implement the tax benefit or the tax abatement for property owners who improve their property for purposes of arts-related business or artist.
Alderman Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because of our budget situation, the staff report and the fiscal analysis focused on the monetary advantages, et cetera. But what it doesn't speak to, which is very important to note, is in, on West Street, we really do have a confluence of the art, of the arts District with the historic district, if you will. And if you go down West Street, those buildings are, they do need, they do need upgrading. They do need help. And this is, I believe, a very good opportunity to invest in those buildings. I'm a fan of adaptive reuse, such as you have done. You haven't spoken to it, but Chuck has done an adaptive reuse of what was the Compass Rose Theater. And that's what we need to do with these buildings. And this legislation will facilitate that as well. Thank you.
We appreciate the fact that you introduced the legislation.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Hollis Minor, Economic Development Manager and also 107 Northwest Street. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. One, there's no revenue loss to the city. It's really just a postponement on certain taxes that we will get in the future. The, it's only on buildings that arts organizations inhabit or artists. So that also is very limiting. You know, it's not that many businesses or buildings or property owners will be able to apply for it. You know, we all know there's a 7-Eleven, there's attorney's offices, there's, you know, there's a real estate company. There's all types of companies in those few blocks. So it's, the fiscal impact should not be significant. And I would like to remind everybody what that street was like just about 10 years ago. I would not have walked the street by myself. I would not have walked up that part of West Street. And to lose that momentum now, to question whether this should be codified now, could seriously damage and then, and back, backdamage the momentum that this district has now. We, if we, and if we do not codify this, the state can remove our approval for a district at all. So, you know, this was, this is just a formality that should have been done in 2008. So I'm sorry that it's in question now, in this particular year. But this is just a technical formality. And I think that we should all recognize that the events, the Dinner Under the Stars, the First Sunday, all of those events bring more spending, more dollars into the city, more spending in our businesses. The wages, we've had, there were 654 jobs created, 62.9 million in GDP for the state, and 18.6 million in wages, increase in wages. These are increases, folks. These are not just totals. These were increases over a two-year period from 2014 to 2016. And that, in fact, is our only momentum from 2008 to 2014. From 2008 to 2014, it pretty much languished. A lot of the, the codification and, and the, the organization, nothing really had, um, taken, if you will, until about 2014. So, we did all that in just two years. And so, the momentum is, is important. And I think that we could probably all recognize that it has not only increased the tax, the taxes in that particular district, but those folks are spending their money downtown. And that increase in wages means people are spending more money right here, our local citizens. Thank you. Any questions?
Hollis, yeah. I just wanna point out too that, um, when it comes to grants and stuff like that, if the state doesn't see us investing in our own arts district, then that hampers our ability to apply for grants and we just witness this.
Exactly. It does give us the opportunity to apply for grants we would not otherwise have. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Hollis. Anybody else like to speak on O-28-18? Uh, I declare the public hearing on O-28-18 closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is legislative actions on first reader, beginning with Resolution R-33-18, submission of proposed union agreement, AFS CME 3406, for the purpose of submitting a written memorandum of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Annapolis and AFS CME 3406 for the fiscal years 2019 through 2022 to the City Council for its ratification or rejection.
Alderman Arnett?
First of all, some move.
Second?
But, Mr. Mayor, I would, uh, move that we take all of these, uh, without objection from my colleagues, these, uh, contracts together. When we saw them last, they were flying in at us. It was like being at a home settlement where the, the, the settling agent was putting pieces of paper that were coming in. But, the staff, and I have to commend the city manager and the staff, have done an excellent job in the staff reports, uh, spelling the impacts of this out quite clearly. And I certainly appreciate, uh, the work they did. And I did certainly my own due diligence in reading through the contracts. So, I, um, would make a motion that we take all three, all four of the contracts as, as one.
Sort of second?
Second.
Discussion? Just gotta check with Regina to make sure that's okay.
We've, we've done it before.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we voting on these tonight?
Uh, yeah. And we're gonna, um, we're gonna, there's a motion to suspend the rules so we can, I'll let Regina talk it through.
Okay. Let me just say, these, um, items, um, since you requested it, they become a resolution. They have to be, um, voted on first reader as a group. They has, to have the rules suspended as a group, and then they have to be voted on second reader as a group to be official. So, you need three votes.
So, I, I was going to also make, if we take this as a group and approve them, which I suspect we will, then a motion to suspend the rules for second reader and then have a vote on that.
Madam City Clerk, do we need to identify those, or, those, um, resolutions that we are taking together?
Yeah. You should read them into the record.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I do so?
Yes, please.
Okay. The, the other items are Resolution R-34-18, submission of proposed union agreement, AFS CME 3162, for the purpose of submitting a written memorandum of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Annapolis and AFS CME 3162 for the fiscal years 2019 through 2022 to the City Council for its ratification or rejection. And another item is Resolution R-35-18, submission of proposed union agreement, Local 1926, for the purpose of submitting a written memorandum of collecting, collective bargaining agreement between the City of Annapolis and Local 1926 for the fiscal years 2019 through 2022 to the City Council for its ratification or rejection. And, and I imagine the Resolution R-36-18 is also among this group. Submission of proposed union agreement, Local 400, for the purpose of submitting a written memorandum of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Annapolis and Local 400 for the fiscal years 2019 through 2022 to the City Council for its ratification or rejection. And I believe those are the four that are taken as a group, if I'm not mistaken.
That was my motion. Yes.
There's a second on that motion?
Mm-hmm. On the motion?
Yep. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those against? Those have it?
Okay. So, they were all adopted on first reader. Now, we need a motion as a group for this to the rule.
Mr. Mayor, I move we suspend the rules to take all, to have second reader on all four of the union agreements.
So, a second? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have the police agreement taken out. I, I'll vote for the other three together.
How do we?
You just voted to do all four.
You're putting a lot in one motion. Suspend the rules and put all four of these together. Uh, I'm okay with suspending the rules. I just wanna talk about the police agreement. That's all. I think it's different from the other three.
Point of information, we're just voting on suspending the rules. We still have time to discuss on second reader.
Right.
Okay.
So, the motion is to suspend the rules.
Okay. All those in favor? So...
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Those have it?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve on second reader all four of the union, uh, agreements.
Second. Discussion?
Discussion, Fred?
I, I just think the, I wanted to talk about the police agreement. I think it's different from the others. And I'm, uh, perfectly happy to take the first three at, at one time, but, um, I've got some issues with R-36-18. And I, uh, don't want to, uh, that to affect my, my vote on the other three, uh, agreements. Matter of fact, I may, I may very well vote for that too, but I just wanted to talk about it. That's all. I don't think it's something to be swept under the rug.
So, is that an amendment to the motion?
He's basically saying that he wants to, um, approve all the three of the contracts except for the last one, the, um, uh, the, for the police.
So, that would be an amendment to my seconded motion.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, did you make that motion, Fred?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second? Second.
A clarification. What's the motion?
The motion is to approve the three union contracts and the police union contracts separately, basically.
Okay.
Just to pull that out for consideration from the other three. That's all. I don't have any problem with the other three.
Okay.
You got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. So, at this point, we need to make a motion to vote on second reader with a roll call for the three union contracts.
I, I so moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's cool to roll?
Can we let the public know what they are?
He's read them in full.
Did you say?
Thirty-three, uh, go back. Thirty-three-18 is submission of proposed union agreement, AFS CME 3406. Thirty-four-18 is submission of proposed union agreement, AFS CME 3162. R-35-18 is submission of proposed union agreement, Local 1926, which is fire.
So, basically, it's labor and trades, clerical, technical, and the fire department.
Right. And, uh, R-36-18 is proposed union agreement.
That's, that's out.
That's the one that's pulled out. Local 400.
Yeah, that's one separate, yes. So...
Okay. We're gonna do a roll call?
Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Peon?
Yes.
Alderman Alchar?
No.
Alderman Silason?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Okay.
You just voted against the three contracts.
Oh, I did?
Yeah.
I thought we were voting not to.
And you, the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Come on. Change your vote.
All right.
Change your vote.
You're voting yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Three down. And now, we're gonna do a motion on second reader for 400.
I move approval of R-36-18.
So, that's an approval and a, and a big thank you.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Fred?
Oh, hold on a second. He needs a second. Did he get a second?
Mr. Mayor, my problem is with the expense involved with the take-home cars. That, um, I feel that, uh, the purpose of having a take-home car is crime prevention. I don't have a problem with people that live in the city taking home the city police cars. I don't even have a problem with people that live right outside the city doing the same thing. But, I do have a problem, um, with people that live in Carroll County or Caroline County, um, doing that. Now, they have to pay fifty or a hundred dollars a month, or fifty dollars a pay, I believe. But, that's a drop in the bucket compared to the expense involved, uh, with this. We have to either lease or purchase cars, and I have no doubt we'll negotiate the best deal we can. One of the solvays to that was that, um, you know, there's a zero percent pay raise in the two years that, in which we will be making the deal, but that hasn't turned out to be the case. They get a pay raise, I think there's zero percent in one of the two years, but one and a half in the other. And, uh, in a year when we're, uh, expenses are, are great and money is tight, I, I don't think this is the time to do it. Uh, I, I do wanna stay competitive with, uh, other jurisdictions, but that's not what a take-home car is, having a take-home car is about. It's supposed to be crime prevention. And how's that preventing a crime when somebody lives on the eastern shore? You know, driving around in a, Annapolis, uh, police cruiser. They do have limited police, uh, capabilities when they're, um, uh, statewide. I understand that, but, uh, I fail to see how that does us any good.
Thank you. Information, Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Arnett?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the vote we have before us is a yes or no. We don't have the ability to amend the agreement. If we don't, if we, if five of us don't like the agreement, the option is to say no and send it back to negotiation. There isn't, there isn't an option to say, "We wanna change the color, or we wanna change the number of cars." It's, it's yes or no.
I, I, I...
Alderman Peon?
Okay. Sorry. I, I agree with that, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, look, these, I, I've worked with, uh, APD. I worked for, with them for thirty-seven years. And hey, they're my guys and gals. Uh, I, I'm not, I'm certainly, I'm certainly not gonna stand in the way of, uh, you know, a, a, a good agreement. I'm glad that they're making, uh, hopefully some, some good money and getting some good benefits. But, I, I just really question whether that's the way to, uh, give it to them. Thank you.
Alderman Silason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna ask Mr. Silvestri to speak to, um, what transpired in bargaining to get us to this point. Uh, I wanna highlight the fact that it is negotiations and it's give and take on both parts. This is not a one-sided, let's give up something. But, it's something that took some time to get to a resolution. Um, I might add that we have tried for many years to provide housing for our officers in the city. They can't afford to live here. I might also add that there are any number of out-of-city and sometimes out-of-state, out-of-county police cars that park in our city because they live here and are a deterrent in our communities already. Um, so, you know, I just wanted to put those things out there. But, if we could have Mr. Silvestri speak to how we got to this point in bargaining, without revealing anything you shouldn't.
I just wanna make a friendly reminder, and I'm sure Mr. Silvestri's aware of it, but I wanted to make sure that the room is aware that collective bargaining agreement negotiations, i- if you go past a certain point, should be conducted in closed session. But, I think, uh, a general description of what has occurred, uh, would be appropriate. Mr. Silvestri, I know that you're, you would be very capable to toe that line.
I'm so counting. Thank you very much. So, I, uh, Alderman, I'm assuming you're talking about the, the Local 400 police negotiations, not the fire.
Right.
All right. So, just a, a couple of, of points very quickly to summarize. Um, the union made it clear from the beginning of the negotiations that it was very important to them, to the officers that serve the city, that a take-home car program, uh, be initiated. Uh, we received the same request last year. If you recall, we had a one-year agreement, um, largely because of financials, um, largely because we were looking forward to a new tax, uh, assessment to see what was going on in terms of our flexibility. Uh, but, but this request is certainly not new, was not new or, or novel in this set of negotiations. Uh, I think it was more, uh, insistent, so to speak, because, um, the officers explained to us during bargaining, without revealing all the details, that, um, the officers in the department, in our unit, were under a, a lot of pressure to, uh, uh, do good for their families and pick the best economic circumstances that they could pick. And they were being solicited by other jurisdictions close to us who offered take-home car programs and better pay rates, uh, than, than we had. So, they made it clear to us that, uh, we would have difficulty recruiting, uh, which is something we already knew because we knew what our market position was, what our benefits were, and difficulty retaining people who we had spent the money training. So, uh, on the city side, uh, we were very concerned in negotiations that, uh, of the expense of a take-home car program. Uh, and also, also concerned with the idea we may be falling behind in connection with wages. Um, so, we worked really hard. I'd say it was a period of a number of months. It was not just, uh, the, the lawyers on the committee or Trish, Trish Hopkins, but it was Melissa and Teresa when she came, City Manager when she came, Chief Stokes in the interim also, and Chief Baker also worked very hard, Captain Amaya from the department, worked hard on developing, uh, different alternatives for us to present to the union in connection with how we would do this. But, one of the alternatives we presented to them was that we would, um, not give them a raise during the period of time of the contract. Uh, and, uh, obviously, the give and take in negotiations resulted in what we have right now. I think the raise that's in there, uh, benefits the senior people who already have take-home cars. There's a lot of senior officers who are not in the patrol, um, ranks, who have specialty assignments, uh, who have take-home cars as a result of that because we demand that they be present at times that are not necessarily on their regular schedule. Um, so, there's a good number of officers already in the department that have take-home vehicles. This is not a, this is not a program that, uh, will provide take-home vehicles where there wasn't any before. So, we're, we're really, in, in essence, filling up the slate in connection with these take-home vehicles.
You know about how many that was? Was it twenty-five or thirty, something like that?
I think it was more than that, Alderman. It was more than that.
Thank you.
So, we're, we're gonna, the number that pops in my head, and I don't have the statistic in front of me, but the number of vehicles we're going to, um, acquire by whatever means we do it legally, um, would be to about forty-one, something like that? Forty-four or forty-one? So, obviously, we are, our patrol force, our police force is much larger than forty-one people. So, I'm hoping I've given you the flavor of what's going on in negotiations. A lot of this is give and take. The idea about collective bargaining negotiations, the philosophy that the city has, at least the city members or the city manager have, it is the philosophy, the win-win philosophy. This is a, uh, not a we-win, you-lose kind of set of negotiations, largely because they, they are members of our community. They serve our community, protect it, uh, as well as the fire. So, what we do is we try to look for ways we can give them what they want and allow us to, to have what we want as well. So, that's where the compromises come in. It's that kind of philosophy that you use in negotiations that benefits everybody in the long run because people walk away from the table, maybe not necessarily completely happy, but they walk away knowing that they achieved something that they didn't achieve. but they walk away knowing that they achieved something that they didn't achieve or the city achieved something that it didn't achieve that it had never achieved before. We have a four-year agreement with labor cost control for four years. That's pretty good. That's a pretty good deal.
That forty-one is over two years.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. That was another compromise as well.
Alderman, attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a point of clarification in the documents that you gave us, it also appears that they, the police need to have the police radio on while they're in these vehicles traveling home. And to me, that means they're on call. Could you clarify that? To, to address my colleague's concern about the, the take-home vehicle being, you know, an enforcement, I mean, a...
So, we, we have not talked with the union about whether or not the position of the union of the city is that these officers are on call. We, as part of the operations procedure for the take-home cars, we keep the radios on. I think it's a safety issue, not necessarily a work issue. The city would definitely take the position that the officers are not on the clock when they clock out. And so, I would not suspect that we would get any claim by the officers who have take-home vehicles now who have radios on because we've got that process in place. So, it already exists.
Alderman, listen.
That technical aspect of that, of the take-home order, so that the, just one more point about this. Rather than put all the details of this into a collective bargaining agreement, which would seem pretty unwieldy, we do this as a, as a course, as a GO, as a general order. So, a lot of that general order comes technically from what the chief and his command staff need to have the take-home cars be presented as. So, you know, keeping them clean, having the officers, limiting them to specific family members, to specific ways in which he can use the vehicle, to store weapons. If they store weapons, to transfer weapons or other equipment that they have from vehicle to vehicle to allow the department to transfer vehicles because we may need a specific vehicle for a specific reason. So, we may take one away from an officer and give that officer some other vehicle. All these things are technical aspects of looking at it as how the program gets, gets operated. I'm sure that as the program gets mature, that general order will change. I'm sure of it, just because of, things look better, they'll, they'll work better in a different way. And so, the chief will change the GO.
Alderman, Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like the take-home car program is kind of a new venture for the city of Annapolis. And when you start something, you can always grow it and develop it, but it's very hard to scale something back once you've started it. So, this is kind of the initial offering of the program. So, I just wanna make sure that, I know that, me in reviewing this, I'm trying to take every effort to make sure that we get it as right as we can out of, out of the gate. Thank you for providing the additional information with the Green Belt Police Department and the City of Bowie Police Department. I did appreciate the opportunity to review their GOs on the take-home car programs. I noticed that in both Green Belt and in the City of Bowie that they were limited to officers who live in the city or within a twenty-mile radius. I noticed that in the one for Annapolis, we didn't put any limitations on where you live. We only added the premium if you live outside of the county. Can you help me understand why we felt like ours was still a, a good deal for the city?
So, part of the give and take during negotiations is what kind of limits we put on the vehicles. And they're all part of the, of, of how we negotiated this. The twenty-mile limit was also part, and I was part of that negotiation as well. So, the twenty-mile limit was also a negotiated limit. I think it depends upon the demographics of, of, of the police officers who are here. Demographics here are that a good chunk of them live in Anarone County, but some of them live outside of Anarone County, including some of the command staff who live outside of Anarone County. So, the demographics are that the twenty-mile radius might not have been as favorably received by the union in, in terms of a negotiation. I don't think there's a study that exists that would tell us whether or not expanding the geographic limit to Anarone County is going to cost us any significantly more money than keeping it at a twenty-mile radius or twenty-five-mile radius. I think we looked at twenty-mile radius, twenty-five-mile radius, inner-county radius. We've looked at all those things. Air miles versus driving. We tried to work up costs for every one of those things. I don't think there was a, much of a significant difference between a twenty-mile radius or twenty-five-mile radius and, and where we've ended up with.
Thank you for taking the time to discuss that and review that and put that on the table there. It's my understanding that the real benefit of this is that it makes us competitive with other jurisdictions if we have a take-home car program. It sounds like what we are asked to adopt is a little bit more liberal of a take-home car program than some other comparable jurisdictions have adopted. I think that it's easier to measure the cost when you are looking at the numbers presented to you. But say we have large recruitment efforts at Castaway and that, and now all of our officers live in Pennsylvania. And so, we are now furnishing a take-home car, obligating ourselves to that, but we are not putting any, any guardrails, so to speak, on the distance that you can travel in the take-home car. That's the, the real point of pause for me on what we have there is just that there is nothing. People have, have traveled this road before. Other elected officials in other municipalities have traveled the road before, and they found it wise to put some limitations on where you can live when you're taking the car home. And I just was, it gives me pause that we have not done the same.
So, I think the proper term is not limitations on where you can live. I think the proper term is limitations on where you can take the car.
Correct.
Okay, so, we don't wanna, we don't wanna speak in terms of you must live here or you must live there. We wanna speak in terms of where, where our property goes, where our personal, the city's personal property goes. So, the only alternative you, you have to that is that you allow them to have take-home cars, even if they live in East Concordia, someplace, whatever, you know, Easton or Cambridge, for example. But you put a limit on them to leave the car at a public safety station within an air mile radius. So, what happens is the officer has to get up, make a shift or her shift, drive to the, drive to the volunteer fire station or police station at some other place where the car's left, pick up our car there, which is set, which has sat there overnight, and then drive that here. That's, that's the way those other programs work. The twenty air mile radius is not a restriction of living. Twenty air mile radius is if you're outside the twenty mile, air mile radius, you go to the nearest public station that's in the twenty-mile radius and you park your car there. That's why we're saying, we're not sure that there's a significantly greater expense allowing them to break that barrier and go beyond that now. Yeah, if everybody decides to move to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and take their car to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, which I don't think is possible, but let's assume that that's the case, then we're gonna have to revisit it because we will have extraordinary expenses.
In the, and examples that were given to us from the city of Bowie and Green Belt, it, it does limit the eligibility for the program to officers that live within the city or a twenty air mile radius. It, it does.
That's Bowie's, I think.
That's Bowie. Green Belt does extend it to a forty-mile radius, and then it assesses a premium if you live within the forty miles. But beyond the forty miles, an officer would be ineligible to participate in the take-home car program.
I think there's one guy that lives in Thurmond in Green Belt. Thurmond is Western Maryland. So, he voted against the contract.
Ms. Henson, I would add that one of the reasons we chose not to use air miles is because we're surrounded by water. So, what's twenty air miles from Annapolis can be pretty far in road miles.
Yes, I'm understanding that. I would have, I would have deferred to the judgment and the wisdom of the team to strike some sort of boundary. I just would have been more comfortable if there was a boundary. I'm not saying that what works for Green Belt and the boundary that works for Bowie works for Annapolis. I would certainly have deferred to the team on the boundary. But it gives me pause that we don't, we, we didn't include a, a boundary.
Alderman, on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we needed to have, at least I felt we needed to have this discussion. I'm ready to support this, although I do have some problems with the way the the car situation is right now. But it's not enough to make me not support the overall, the union agreement. And having said that, I think it's time to call the question.
Alderman on that. Well, you called a question, huh?
I, I had a technical question.
Another second? Alderman on that.
Thank you. Mr. Silvestri, I wanted to follow up on something you said because it's my belief that we're agreeing to a four-year contract, and the general order is part of the contract. Is there a flexibility, I guess, with mutual consent between the chief and the staff or the union steward to modify the GO as we get more experience, say, with cars or with the general order number one, which had to do with promotions?
So, there's always technically a way to revise agreements, including GOs that are part of the agreement. They're called for, you know, written, the, the way you do that is you make a written amendment to the contract. You have it approved by the normal process, which means, for the most part in the union world, that means another ratification vote by members. It's very unusual to have those midstream in any contract in public or private sector. And I would say to you, even though we have, the benefit of a four-year deal for us is we have labor cost control for four years. And I can't emphasize more, given the current state of economic affairs in the region, how much of an advantage I think we have of that. The burden is, of course, that we're stuck with a GO, a car GO, that maybe not, may not be the best GO in, in some people's minds. It may be better in other people's minds, but we're stuck with it for four years. I, I don't want you to get the impression that we can wake up in six months with buyer's remorse or the union can wake up in six months with buyer's remorse and say we should renegotiate a better car GO. I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna take a number of years of accumulating data here on these cars because most of them are gonna be new. And the process is gonna be new in terms of assignment and how they change and how they maintain them. We're not gonna be able to tell whether we're really spending more money than we should spend on these for, I'd say, a few years, probably four years at least, just because of the life of the cars and how they, on how they work. The other problem we have, of course, is that we, and this is my own view of this, that, that we do not have a robust replacement program currently in place for our own cars, which, which, which has handcuffed us because it deprives us of real valid information about car usage and car expense. See, if we had that, we'd have a much better idea about expense than we do now. We have, we have accurate projections, but I would suspect that we'd have a lot more facts in four years.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm really kind of torn on this. I understand from the perspective of recruiting and wanna be supportive to the police department in that regard, but I do have a lot of concern about the financial end. And we just, as an example, I think the, the body-worn cameras just has turned out to be a much higher expense than I think many realize. And I'm just kind of afraid that this may end up being such an expense. I mean, based on the estimates, and thank you, Teresa, the city manager, for the information. I mean, it looks like it does bring the cost FY twenty-twenty-two to about, what was it, half a million dollars? Over half a million dollars. So, I mean, that's essentially, if you look at our tax, that's about one cent increase in the tax. I'm not saying it's gonna increase this year's tax rate, but I'm just saying for equivalent. It's a lot of money. I'm just, and so, you mentioned that you don't think it would save us much if we narrowed the radius. But the estimate here has the take-home vehicle commute cost going to one hundred and eighty-six thousand in FY twenty-twenty, three hundred and eighty-four thousand in FY twenty-twenty-one, and then up to four hundred thousand in FY twenty-twenty-two. So, wouldn't that cost be reduced if we reduced?
It would be reduced, but I'm, I'm saying to you that based upon what we were looking at by imposing either an air mile radius or, or a valid or a drive-by mile radius, we would either not have enough officers captured to make the program attractive to the, attractive to the officers or we would be going through the expense anyway because of the miles involved. So, we balancing up the expense of the miles versus the ability to retain officers. Now, one of the costs you can't measure here is what happens if we don't have this program and we can't recruit our, the best people we need to recruit or we lose seasoned officers who have community ties, who, who generate goodwill on behalf of the city with the, with the community, who now leave and go to some other community. And so, we have to retrain, we have to train their replacements. We have to find them first, cause them to come to work for us, and then train them. And anybody who's gone through high-transition employment understands that, that training cost, the loss of, of, of an associate or a work colleague that has that kind of training to replace that person is a, is a very high cost. I can't capture it for you, but I can tell you that if our standards of quality get lowered here in terms of the quality of police officers we can recruit, we'll have expense that you haven't anticipated yet. We'll have expense through lawsuits, we'll have expense through community objection. And we'll have, we'll have long-term command staff expense because there won't be as many qualified candidates coming up through the ranks to sit into high-quality command staff positions. Again, I can't predict it for you. I can't tell you, you know, what the specifics are. All I can tell you is through my experience, that's gonna happen if we don't figure out a way to be market-competitive for our officers.
I have a related question, Ms. Hopkins. Do you have any information on how many officers live in the city or in the county and how many are out of the area?
We have that.
So, I'm pulling this up now, but from memory, it was either five or six live in the city. That's it. Who already have take-home cars.
Out of a hundred and...
Hundred and twenty.
Twenty, almost.
Hundred and ten.
Only five?
They're vacancies.
Yeah. Counting people, that's a different.
Counties.
No, we were counting people. Yeah.
Call up his spreadsheet.
Clearly, the analysis was done. And, and as Mr. Silvestri said before, we, we looked at so many combinations. You know, we really tried to see where our people live now. If you, it's no reflection on what the future staff may be because they may make decisions about where they live based on availability of the car and, and what kind of access, what kind of payment they may have to make in reduction from pay that may influence where people live in the future as well. Okay, so, we had a hundred and twenty positions, forty-seven already have cars. The number of officers who don't live in the county is sixty-eight, of which fourteen are special assignments, like the K-nine officers or something like that. And... I don't, I don't know where the spreadsheet is about who's in the city, but it was five or six. That was it.
That's just me.
The number in the county, who live in the county is... Forty-eight.
So, so, think about this in terms of votes. If you limit it to the county, you're not gonna have fifty, you're gonna have fifty votes against the agreement. You will not negotiate a collective bargaining agreement with the police officers if you limit this to the county because there's fifty votes of people who don't have cars who live outside the county. live outside the county.
Alderman Henson?
I'll ask my colleagues as well if it is normal to be backed into a corner when you are negotiating a contract and for your options to be take it or leave it. Is this, has this been customary in years past, that if you don't give us everything we're asking for, we're going to vote no?
Yes.
No.
Before you ask your colleagues that, can I respond to this?
Sure.
This is not a take it or leave it.
This is no.
Set of negotiations.
Yes.
Because in addition to the pay, to the take-home cars, of course, the police wanted percentage pay increases. They wanted other benefits in the agreement. So they compromised their position through us. We said to them, we're not going to give you your pay increases that you want if you want your take-home vehicles. So it was a compromise. Our backs were not to the wall. There is no strike provision here. The, the officers couldn't strike, they couldn't withhold their services. And there's no mediation here. In other words, there's no ordered mediation, there's no binding interest arbitration like they have in other jurisdictions. We're in a very favorable position. No one's back us to the wall.
I feel like...
The management team decided that this is what was the most beneficial contract we could negotiate that would allow us to take benefits from, like, lower pay increases to the police and like a four-year labor agreement that controls labor costs. Those were the compromises that we reached. If, if the agreement fails, then the responsibility that we have is then to go back and renegotiate the agreement if we can be renegotiated. If it can't be renegotiated, then the current terms stay the way they are, that is, that the only pay raises that the officers get are the pay raises and the step increases. So the senior officers, the people who are some of the most valuable officers to us, will not get pay raises because they'll be out of, they'll be out of the step progression. And we will lose some of them, because they will go to other jurisdictions who will offer them $25,000 or $15,000 signing clauses. So again, I don't wanna correct you, it's not my job to do that, but, but I do wanna correct the record, there isn't any back against the wall here.
It sounds like what you're saying is that we, our opportunity, I feel like we're really close to a really good agreement. We're not very far from like it being excellent in, in terms of me assessing it through my own lens. But without having any parameters kinda on where the cars go, it, it seems like it's taking us out of the character of other jurisdictions. We are losing our ability to kinda rein that cost in. I think it's gonna be very difficult four years from now to say, everyone could take their cars to where they live, but now we will limit it. I think we get one shot to kinda get this right, and we can definitely make it a program that has room to grow, but I don't know that we'll ever be able to scale it back down. Especially at this point, we don't even have the program yet, and the, the dialogue is, if we don't, then we won't be competitive, and we'll have bottom-of-the-barrel officers who, you know, won't, who will incur lawsuits and do all types of terrible things. I have a young teenage African-American son who walks the streets in this city, so I certainly don't want us having officers who are rejected elsewhere and find Annapolis their only home. But I don't also want to feel like if we don't, if we just open the barn door with this take-home car program, that that is our only option there. And it feels like, if, because what you're saying is, if we reject it and it goes back, that they won't approve anything that is not exactly what we have now. So it feels like...
I can't make a prediction, but I, I agree, I share your concerns. I think your concerns are real. I think that once you put something in a collective bargaining agreement, it's difficult to remove. I think it would take us, it would, we'd have to demonstrate that we would have a significant expense that we hadn't anticipated from these cars in four years to move anything beyond that or to, and I think that the, the, the resolution would not be to limit the car, use of the cars, the resolution would be to require the officers to pay more money. So we would recruit some of the expense. This way, we won't be influencing where they live, we would just have their, we would just take more money for them to pay for the car expense. So there's other ways to do it, but I think your concerns are valid. Once something goes into an agreement, it's, it's more difficult to get out. I agree with that.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you. But in response to my colleague, Alderwoman Henson, our vote really is yes, we ratify or no, we don't. We can't change the parameters of the agreement that has been reached. So, you know, this is yes or no. I think I've been having a long back-and-forth dialogue with the city manager about ways that we can get the council involved more in the beginning of the next union negotiation in general terms, so that we have a better sense of where it's going. And I, I think this dialogue is totally legitimate. Eighty percent of our budget is salaries and benefits, and so if we're not concerned about that, I think we're shirking our responsibility. But at this point, the team has done their best, the unions have done their best, we have an agreement, and we either say yes, we'll ratify it, or no, we won't. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it is awkward, because we supposedly control the purse strings, but in this regard, we don't.
Yes, that point was, was, may I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry?
May I respond to my colleagues?
Sure.
Thank you. Absolutely, that point was not lost, that the vote today is a yes or a no. I was trying to get a gauge for, should it be a no, what is the climate like in terms of discussing it and then kinda identifying some of those issues that would make it a no, so that we kinda can have a feel for if it's a no, what does that no actually mean in terms of rediscussing and renegotiating the terms?
Alderman Henson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the nature of bargaining. Ideally, our bargaining should begin in October, and we should be finished by January or February at the latest, which would give us an opportunity to have greater input. That did not happen this year, in large part because of the election. Your concerns are legitimate, even though some of the comparisons, I feel, are not. Bowie, for example, and Mr. Silvestri, I don't know whether you represent Bowie or not.
I do.
But what's the size of their city? We're seven square miles.
They're, they have a larger city. They have a larger city, they generate income. I think their force is slightly larger than yours.
And they've only had a force for what, maybe five years?
No, it's been longer than that, it's probably been 10 years.
Can't be that.
Yeah, I think it's been 10 years. I mean, time flies.
I remember when their force was created, because they relied totally on their county police, and then they created...
This is a, this is a good example.
Their own.
When Bowie got into the business of policing, they didn't go to the market and say, we're gonna pay market wages. When Bowie started to develop a police force, they paid higher wages than any other municipality in this region. They had to do that to attract people to come to Bowie to be police officers. It's a, it's just a law of supply and demand. That's exactly what happened. Bowie was paying probably 10% more than Greenbelt at that point in time, and Greenbelt couldn't do a damn thing about it, because one, they didn't have the budget, and two, that, that pay was not what they were willing to, to pay for their officers.
So I, I bring that up, because we're not comparing apples and oranges, really, we aren't. Our city is an anomaly, and in so many different respects, and as time goes on, you'll, you'll see that. But as far as this process is concerned, hopefully, and I trust that our city manager is going to make sure that next year, not next year, three years down the road, when we're back at the bargaining table, then we'll adhere to the timeline that the code speaks to. And so there will be greater opportunity for input. You know, Mr. Silvestri mentioned the fact that the approach is, and it has been since interest-based bargaining, that it's win-win. So it's an opportunity to give and take on, on both parts. Ms. Sutherland, I am sure that, and you have told us this, that this agreement, at least in the first year, is within the confines of the budget that we've approved.
That's correct.
And it also gives you the ability to project future costs for our city.
That's correct.
So in, in, through this bargaining process, we get a product that is acceptable to all involved, and it's something that we've already agreed that we can pay for in the first year with a plan for the out-years. You don't get any better than that. So, thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
I wanna point out to all my colleagues, the city manager already has done a forecast four years out, and it does show that the expected revenue does cover the four years of the union contracts. I don't think she would've agreed to the contracts were that not the case, but as, as much as we can rely on forecasts, we're covering, which is what, I mean, this is a lot of money. In year four, we're talking about 3 million new dollars in the city budget. But I'm comforted with the forecast that we have the money, and we definitely need the officers.
Alderman Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have something to say, and then it, it leads to a question. I think this needs to be said to put things in context, because I don't know if my colleagues received the same emails that I did from a union representative, saying, in the wake of what we all suffered from 12 days ago, you know, why are we talking about this very important, you know, service of our city? But I have to put it in context as a, as, as an alderwoman and say, our charter says that the council will review the union negotiations after a fiscal analysis is provided to us. And for the record, that fiscal analysis was not received until, you know, two or three days ago, which I don't think was ever done before in the, in the, in the thoroughness that, that, that our city manager provided. She responded with the fiscal analysis and her assumptions each year documented separately. And, and I, you know, there's a new sheriff in town, and, and I think that this is going to be the, the practice, which leads me to my question and my concern in light of all that, is it is a four-year contract, which is another unique thing with this legislation. So next year, when we review the budget, is there any sort of analysis we can do with this negotiation to say, wow, you know, it did, it did help our hiring, it did, I mean, do we, do we have any checks and balances next year when we review the budget? And I'll ask that to, to Ms. Sutherland.
We can certainly see what kind of, I'll call them performance measures, I'm not quite sure what the right term would be, but yeah, I mean, what vacancies do we have now? Have we been able to fill our vacancies? How much turnover do we have in the police department? What, when we do, when people do leave? What ranks are they leaving from? What years are they leaving from? Is it people retiring with 25 years, or are we losing people at year five to Anaronda County because they pay more? Or, or to some other counties? So, yeah, we, I mean, HR's got information, and we can certainly gather those statistics as the year goes by and see where we are.
We do do exit, we, we do exit interviews. Another idea, as, as Teresa was speaking, is we could probably figure out a way to, to ask people to identify what attracted them to the city of Annapolis, so we can get a better idea of, are we, are we on target here? Are we, are we now providing the kinds of attractive elements for individuals to choose the city of Annapolis as their destination employer, so to speak? And, and we could probably kind of do an entrance analysis like we do in Texas.
And I would add, we still might lose our officers to other jurisdictions who, who they perceive to be more attractive than working here. But that doesn't negate the value of this contract. It doesn't negate that when we go to recruit to fill those vacancies, we're competitive in our recruitment. So it's both a recruitment and a retention matter. And I guess we can't lose sight of the fact that that really is the objective. That is the objective. That is the benefit to the taxpayers of the city of Annapolis, is recruiting and retaining the best officers we can get. It isn't necessarily driving a car within a seven-mile radius. It's that we are going to be able to recruit and retain highly qualified officers. That is the benefit to the taxpayers of the city of Annapolis.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt R-36-18 on second, Rita, and we have a second. We are gonna call the roll. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Henson? No. Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Paeon?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Lason?
Aye.
Alderman Robregus?
Aye.
Okay, you guys have it. Well, thank everybody for the negotiations. We wanna thank the unions. We want you to know that we love you. And you don't have to talk to us for four years on this stuff. How good is that?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
Can I ask the city attorney, uh, city manager a question? Do we, because we're late this number of days, do we need to do anything in terms of authorizing the nine days of expenditures?
You just did. It says it's retroactive to July 1.
Okay, thank you.
And the pay plan resolution is on your agenda, which is also retroactive to July 1.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-30-18, Schedule of Changes for the Purpose of Modifying the Use of Proceeds of the City's Public Improvements Bond Anticipation Notes 2017 Series.
Is there a motion to adopt O-30-18 on first, Rita?
So moved.
Second? Through a second? Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? You guys have it?
Uh, no, I oppose. I wanna make sure I was voting on the right one. Yeah.
Yep. So is there a motion to suspend the rules to dispense with fiscal impact note, public hearing requirements to referral standing committees, and third reading on Ordinance O-30-18?
What?
We need a, a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
So we're, but we're spending it on O-30-18.
Yep. Second on that?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
On suspending the rules or voting on it?
No.
Suspending the rules.
Let's be clear what we're voting on.
On suspending the rules. O-10.
The 2020 budget.
Oh, okay. Okay, so yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, is there a motion to adopt O-30-18 on second, Rita?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Paeon?
No.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Lason?
Aye.
Alderman Robregus?
Aye.
You guys have it? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Ordinance O-32-18, Amended FY 2019 Annual Operating Budget for the Purpose of Amending the FY 2019 Annual Operating Budget for the City of Annapolis.
Is there a motion to adopt O-32-18 on first, Rita?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those against? Right. Is there a motion, must be on unanimous consent, is there a motion to suspend the rules to dispense with fiscal impact notes, public hearing requirements, referral standing committees, and third, Rita, on Ordinance O-32-18?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it? Is there a motion to adopt O-32-18 on second, Rita?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Pahn?
Aye.
Alderman Pinnell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
You all have it. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-37-18, amended FY 2019 pay plan for the purpose of amending the FY 2019 pay plan effective July 1, 2018.
Is there a motion to adopt R-37-18 on first, Rita?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? You all have it. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor say, discussion?
Yes, please. I'd like to ask the city manager, is, is this the pay schedule that we discussed in the finance committee? I'm, I'm trying to figure out what changed and looking at it, I can't tell.
It's been amended for the union negotiations, so it has the COLAs in it.
Okay.
That were not in the previous version that you saw, and it has the change to step 11 in it.
Thank you.
On the A scale.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
We have suspended the rules when we had a second.
Okay, we've had discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
To suspend the rules? Alderman Pahn?
This, this is simply to suspend the rules or about the, about the meat and potatoes, if you will, of our 37-18?
It was suspending the rules. He, you just made a motion and had a second to suspend the rules.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to adopt R-37-18 on second, Rita?
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Pahn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought, Madam City Manager, that we had set aside 900 and some odd thousand dollars for union negotiations. This figure appears to be a couple of hundred thousand dollars over that.
So, part of the union negotiations were also that the police and fire unions gave up participating in VIBA and getting the VIBA CHOP. So, we had budgeted money for VIBA CHOP that will not be spent for that, which was part of the negotiation to give them pay raises. They give up VIBA CHOP, so we'll have 163,000 savings there and we will have approximately 86,000 dollars in savings on the way we're paying workers' comp now versus how we will be paying it, or how we were paying in FY 18 versus how we're paying it now. So, we have between the reserve for the labor negotiations, the VIBA CHOP savings and the workers' comp savings, that's 1,187,000. And the cost of the contracts for the first year is 1,174,000. So, we actually have 13,000 more.
Thank you. Discussion. Okay, so Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Pahn?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Right. Mission carries.
So, are we finally finished with the 2019 budget?
Yes.
Let's give ourselves a round of applause, please.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The agenda has been completed.
Is there anything else for good order? Alderwoman Tierney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if it was the city manager's call, but I'd just like to say thank you for the police presence at the doors. I saw them standing throughout the entire meeting and I'm sure that gives us comfort specifically to Danielle. And thank you very much for that order, if you made it. Thanks.
Let's hear it for the police. Okay, anything else for good order?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Pahn?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay. Any second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? All right.